Seeing none, we're going to move on to announcements and presentations. A few announcements and presentations we have. First one, the San Bruno Flea Market will be held in San Bruno City Park on July 21st from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Next, we have the library will be hosting December Reading Science Fair and Ice Cream Social on Wednesday, July 24th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. There will be multiple hands-on STEM activities for all ages. Ice cream will be served promptly at 3:00, in case you want to time yourself. And then, next, I'd like to receive a report from the San Bruno Police and Fire Departments regarding July 4th, 2019, public safety calls for service. Lieutenant.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. On July 4th, 2019, the Police Department handled a total of 280 incidents this year, 147 of which were fireworks-related. These numbers were fairly consistent with those of recent years. For example, in 2018, we handled a total of 273 incidents, with 173 of those being fireworks-related. Of the 147 fireworks-related incidents this year, 52 were initiated by officers in the field, as opposed to a call for service from the public. This number is nearly double what it was last year, when 31 of the total fireworks calls were initiated by police officers. The San Bruno Police Department divides this city into three distinct areas, known as "beats." In very general terms, Beat 1 is essentially the area bordered by 280 to the west, 101 to the east, Sneeve Lane to the north, and San Bruno Avenue to the south, but includes the avenues as well. Approximately 35% of the 4th of July incidents originated in the Beat 1 service area. Beat 2 is essentially the area bordered by 280 to the west, Huntington Avenue to the east, San Bruno Avenue to the north, and the south city limit. Approximately 39% of the 4th of July calls for service originated in this Beat 2 service area. Beat 3 is essentially everything else, everything west of 280. Approximately 26% of the 4th of July incidents this year originated on Beat 3. The peak activity period for calls for service began on the 4th of July at approximately 8:00 p.m. and tapered off significantly to near nothing shortly after 11:00 p.m. Staff engaged in a number of different efforts to educate the public and raise awareness of fireworks safety concerns and laws prior to the 4th of July holiday. These efforts included: working with San Bruno Cable to provide public service announcements aired on Channel 1, including a video message from both the fire and police chiefs; disseminating flyers regarding fireworks safety and laws throughout all fireworks booths; conducting a meeting with all fireworks vendors to review rules and regulations on the sale of safe and sane fireworks, as well as reporting procedures for the use of illegal fireworks. We also issued multiple press releases and social media posts to our followership of approximately 20,000 individuals, and we regularly posted enforcement activity updates throughout the 4th of July, as well as on the 5th and 6th. In the days leading up to the 4th of July holiday, Police Department personnel also visited approximately 15 different locations where violations had been reported in past years. Officers spoke with residents at these locations about the use of illegal fireworks, including our enforcement efforts, penalties for the possession and use, as well as the danger these items posed to the public. Additionally, officers warned residents about the excessive consumption of alcohol, the impact large and unruly gatherings have on the community, and pedestrian safety issues on the 4th of July. In terms of enforcement, the Police Department deployed additional officers to conduct illegal fireworks enforcement from June 28th through July 7th. Officers patrolled for illegal fireworks and violations of safe and sane use, paying particular attention to open space areas. These officers were assigned during times of peak activity from 7:00 p.m. to 3:00 a.m. These efforts were hampered somewhat this year due to the shooting incident at Tanfran Mall on July 2nd. Officers assigned to work fireworks enforcement that evening had to necessarily be reassigned. The Police Department also ordered all off-duty personnel to work on the 4th of July once again, canceling all regularly scheduled days off and time off. All personnel already working that day were required to maximize their hours at 16 hours for the shift. In addition to the normal patrol beats, fireworks enforcement teams were organized and assigned to geographic regions throughout the city from 6:00 p.m. on July 4th to 2:00 a.m. on July 5th. And all 32 sworn and 14 non-sworn personnel worked the special enforcement detail. These efforts were also hampered somewhat by the Tanfran shooting incident, as all of our investigative personnel were busy investigating the shooters, investigating the shooting and identifying the shooters. When officers were able to observe an individual using illegal fireworks, they made use of the city ordinance sections and issued administrative citations that carry a fine of $1,000 per violation. A special emphasis was placed this year on officers patrolling problem areas on foot and on bicycles. Additionally, non-uniformed officers were deployed to direct uniformed staff to issue citations for observed violations. This proactive effort resulted in a total of 21 administrative citations for the use and/or possession of dangerous fireworks on the 4th of July. The issuance of citations occurred throughout the city. As in years past, there were pockets of increased activity. These pockets existed in all different service areas of the city. Existing municipal code sections allow for the enforcement of anyone that allows, causes, maintains, or permits a violation to exist or continue by an act or omission. This year, all citations were issued to individuals found to be in possession of or actively using illegal fireworks. However, video is currently being reviewed to determine whether or not additional citations should be issued and are merited for residents that allowed this activity. Of the 21 individuals that were cited this year, 10 were San Bruno residents, 11 were not. Approximately 75 pounds of illegal fireworks were seized this year. This is approximately double the amount typically seized on the 4th of July, although last year we had a single seizure of over 300 pounds, which skewed the numbers somewhat. The Fire Department responded to eight fireworks-related calls on the 4th of July, which Chief Cresta will discuss more momentarily. There were no pedestrian safety issues reported. When contacting large groups celebrating the holiday, officers generally received the necessary cooperation. However, both dispatchers and officers in the field regularly interacted with individuals who were angry at either a perceived lack of enforcement, or because they felt we were enforcing too proactively. Of course, non-fireworks-related calls for service do not stop on the 4th of July, as indicated by our response to approximately 130 non-fireworks-related incidents on that same day. Incidents of note that required substantial police resources included a protracted search for a subject that breached security at our Marine Reserve Base. This subject was ultimately located and arrested. There was also a DUI hit-and-run collision in the avenues, in which the suspect struck three vehicles and fled on foot, being apprehended a short distance away. Although you are very aware, I believe that it is important to note that the preparation and response to this holiday is a collaborative effort that requires a great deal of planning. A preliminary cost estimate for this year's education and enforcement programs citywide, including all participating departments, is just over $52,000. The calculated costs only include what is done above and beyond the normal course of business to prepare and work the 4th of July holiday. I'd like to acknowledge the work of the Police Department Command Staff for developing a thorough and comprehensive operations plan, as well as all of the officers, dispatchers, community service officers, and police clerks who spent yet another 4th of July holiday away from their families to try and keep our city safe. Additionally, I'd like to recognize the Community Services Department, who assigned four staff members to monitor activity at the parks throughout the city on the 4th of July, and I extend my appreciation to the Public Services Department, whose staff picked up approximately eight cubic yards of trash, mostly expended fireworks, following the holiday. Finally, I'd like to thank the Fire Department, who once again worked hand-in-hand with the Police Department personnel to provide for a safe evening. As you might imagine, the Police Department receives a great deal of feedback regarding 4th of July activities. This feedback includes criticism that enforcement efforts are not adequate, and we receive video and anecdotal accounts of the use of illegal fireworks and other unruly behavior associated with the holiday. On the other hand, we also receive a substantial amount of criticism that our enforcement efforts are too robust and too proactive. We hear from many individuals who do not believe we should expend the resources we do. They feel that this activity only occurs a few days a year and does not require the attention we give it. The Police Department empathizes with all of our residents regardless of their position on our enforcement levels. Our primary concern is to do our best to provide for a holiday that is as safe and enjoyable for all as possible. As we do following every large event or operation, the Police Department evaluates the effectiveness of its planning, strategy, and tactics to make adjustments accordingly. We will conduct this same evaluation and make necessary adjustments to enhance our efforts for next year's holiday. That conducts my presentation, and I'd like to turn it over to Chief Cresta to speak a little more about the fire operations.
Thank you, Lieutenant Chief.
Thank you, Mayor Medina, members of the council. Dave Cresta, your Fire Chief, with a summary of our response on the 4th of July. As Lieutenant said, we did have eight fireworks-related calls on the 4th. We had one on July 3rd, which was a small fire started with safe and sane fireworks at Cappuccino. It just started a little bit of nearby dry grass, didn't cause any damage. Of the calls on the 4th, four were smoke investigations, which most likely did not result in fires we investigated. Most likely, they were either fireworks being shot off in the area. That didn't result in any sort of fire incident. The rest, the four incidents, two were trash fires, meaning that they were most likely safe and sane fireworks discarded improperly in a trash container, and it damaged only the trash container. We had a fire in a trash can on Sherwood adjacent to a residence that luckily was discovered very early and was able to be extinguished prior to it caused, caused a little bit of damage to the exterior of the home. That was safe and sane fireworks discarded in the trash can. And then, we had a structure fire in Toyon that caused us to have extended on-scene time and resources to a structure fire that started in the garage. Safe and sane fireworks discarded improperly in the garage. The resident had them there, forgot, unattended them for a period of time, and a fire started in the garage. Luckily, we were able to make a stop before it entered into the, it got up into the attic and got into a little bit of the house, but we were able to make a pretty good aggressive stop on it. And however, it did cause about $200,000 damage to that residence. So, all in all, it was about the same kind of, kind of the same response we had last year. We had about nine firework-related incidents last year. So, that's all my report. So, we're here for any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions of council to Lieutenant or Chief?
Thank you so much, both of you, for your very thorough report. Were there any injuries, either from safe and sane or from illegal?
We did not respond to any medicals related to fireworks, no.
Well, that's fabulous. That's something to be thankful for. Thank you.
Laura?
So, fireworks becomes an ongoing discussion in San Bruno, and I know that you hear the comments from residents that just think, "Why do we have fireworks? This is causing a lot of these illegals." For a lot of residents, I'm sure those with animals continually suffer for the weeks leading up to it and even following it. You know, plans on the 4th of July had to be canceled because of our animals. Drove around the city, saw a lot of stuff. You know, one of the things I noticed too is a lot of residents not obeying the rules where if you're lighting off safe and sane, they should really be in front of you or driveway on your property. They're lighting them off in the center of the street, they're lighting them off in the center of the intersections. You know, so we can, it's really helpful for all of us, and you know, as we as residents to see it, spot it, educate, let people know what the right thing to do is. But it's a challenging job, even getting through, navigating through the city streets is challenging. So, I definitely really appreciate everything you do. But I will say, throughout the peninsula, whether it's San Bruno or any other city that does not have safe and sane, illegal fireworks are going off everywhere. The first thing I did when I arrived to work on Friday was ask all coworkers who live all sorts down peninsula, and it was crazy everywhere. And so, I know that it was voted in by the people to continue to sell safe and sane fireworks and, you know, the place in the fire, do the best you can to keep our city safe, and we really appreciate that. So, thank you.
And then, finally, I was just going to say, I did go to the police and other personnel briefing on the 4th and did do a ride-along, bless you, and did do a ride-along, and so, and responded to on Sherwood, the trash fire. So, what I do want to say is, somewhat what Laura had said, the resources that are expended are received and returned back from the booth sales, and that pays for that additional services. And in other communities, they serve, the staff at status quo, because it's not in the budget for otherwise. So, with the other incidences that you also mentioned, Lieutenant, that were going on as you were patrolling and doing your jobs, I want to thank both departments, Community Service, Public Works, who collectively work together, and I saw it firsthand, and so I want to thank both departments and the other staff for the work and the job that you did. So, thank you. Next, I've asked Lieutenant if he could give us a review summary of the incident that occurred at the shops at Tanfran on July 2nd. I'm sure all of you are aware, but I thought the community might want a brief update, and also understand it is an ongoing investigation, so understand as far as questions or those type of things, they have to be limited and/or kept to this point. Lieutenant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, on Tuesday, July 2nd, 2019, at 3:56 p.m., the Police Department started receiving multiple reports of an active shooter in the food court at Tanfran Mall. Due to the mall's proximity to the police station, officers were on scene within seconds and immediately encountered a very chaotic scene that included hundreds of people frantically fleeing the area. Acting on information that the shooting occurred on the second level above the food court, officers immediately assembled response teams and pressed forward to that location. Upon arrival on the second level, officers located two gunshot-wound victims, both teenaged males. One victim was suffering from multiple gunshot wounds to the abdomen, and the other from at least one gunshot wound to the leg. There was a military recruiter who had been stationed at the mall attending to the victim with the abdominal injuries when we arrived. An officer immediately took to assisting him, while another officer applied a combat action tourniquet to the leg of the other victim. Other officers worked to secure this area so that medical teams could quickly evacuate our victims. A county-wide request for mutual aid was broadcasted, and outside agencies responded immediately. A tactical command post was established, and force protection teams were promptly assembled with police, fire, and medical personnel. Within minutes of the original call, these force protection teams entered a very unstable and dangerous scene and successfully evacuated both victims for transport to area trauma centers. Both victims are expected to survive. A large perimeter was established around Tanfran Mall as multiple SWAT teams responded to assist with a search for suspects. Suspect descriptions available to responding personnel at this point were vague and inconsistent, but a large-scale search of the entire mall property was coordinated and initiated nonetheless. No suspects or additional victims were located during that search. The subsequent investigation into this incident is still underway. As a result, there are many details that investigators are aware of, but which cannot be shared publicly at this time in order to protect the integrity of the investigation. What we can tell you is that this shooting stemmed from a dispute between two groups of six to 10 people. During this dispute, one subject from each group produced a firearm and fired multiple rounds at the other group. Both victims struck by gunfire were members of the same group involved in the dispute. Both shooters fled the scene in opposite directions immediately following the shooting and managed to exit mall property before a perimeter was established. Shell casings from at least two different firearms, along with a substantial amount of other evidence, was located at our crime scene. Through a great deal of tenacious diligence by our investigators and a tremendous amount of assistance from other agencies, including the San Francisco Police Department, who's played an instrumental role, we believe that we've identified nearly all of the people involved in this incident. One of the shooters and his accomplice, both male juveniles, have already been arrested and are being charged. One of the firearms believed to have been used in this incident has in fact been recovered, as have others. The other shooter has been identified as San Francisco resident Deandre Lejeune Gant. He is described as an 18-year-old black male adult, six feet tall and weighing 205 pounds. Multiple law enforcement agencies are currently zeroing in on Gant's location in an effort to secure his arrest. More than a dozen law enforcement agencies responded from throughout the Bay Area to our urgent request for assistance at this incident. Countless officers from San Bruno and our partner agencies fearly ran into what they believed to be an extremely dangerous active shooter scenario, in an area of the mall that simply cannot be accessed safely under these circumstances. Fire and medical personnel also braved exceedingly dangerous conditions to facilitate immediate evacuations of critically injured victims. This incident serves as yet another example of the exceptional work done by the brave men and women who serve as first responders throughout this entire county, and also displays the effectiveness with which these various entities work together during critical incidents. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to field questions from council, but please again understand there are many aspects of the investigation I cannot discuss.
Any questions, comments, at this point? No? What I was going to say was, yeah, Lieutenant, thank you for the detailed report. I also want to say that, being at the mall after all was going on, and seeing the call that went out, and once again, and in the YouTube shooting, the response for the mutual aid from our neighbors was impressive. It's also something that I've heard of a post, or I was asked a few times, you know, early on in the conversation is, "Well, how couldn't we have got them?" And I think, as you've indicated, it's not that they just ran to part. There's a lot of things that we may not all know that go on. But I clearly want to make it evident that I believe almost all of this community is appreciative for what you did, and the men and women in public safety, fire, and others. We had the Streets Department closing down streets. So, as far as myself, I have seen it unfortunately twice in my term as mayor, and I'm extremely proud, and I stand with the public safety personnel in the Police Department, and I stand with law enforcement for what they do, for people that come into our community have no regard for life, shooting in a food court because of some argument. And I'm glad two were caught, and I'm glad the other one in my heart will be caught, and they should be held accountable, as the chief said. So, I want to, for myself and this council, I want to thank the men and women, please convey that, and I think the community also stands by you too.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, now, we're going to receive an annual report from the Citizens Crime Prevention Committee.
Good evening, Mayor Medina and City Council Members, and thank you for providing us with an opportunity to review the Citizen Crime Prevention Committee report. In the spirit of environmental sustainability, we will not be providing handouts, but we do have the screen, so please put your focus and attention onto our presentation. Hopefully, get this to work. Okay, our committee members are comprised of myself, Deanna Robinson, I'm the chair. We have Rhonda Boone, who is the vice chair, and then we have members at large, Peter Carey, Mary Mahon, Val Morgan, Robert Reichel, Richard Wong, and we're supported by Council Member Marty Medina, so thank you, as well as Officer Sherry Campbell, who is our Police Department liaison. One of the key goals of our committee is to assist San Bruno residents with establishing and maintaining Neighborhood Watch programs, and we continue to explore ways to gain greater participation. So, I see that there's a lot of people here, and we definitely welcome you. If you do not have a Neighborhood Watch program, please reach out to us, and we'll be more than happy to help you out. Currently, we have about 33 different Neighborhood Watch programs and groups, and we are continuing to work and identify additional ways to gain greater participation. Part of what we do is encourage the formation of groups, and we've worked with residents who have expressed interest in the Neighborhood Watch program, and we also do quite a bit of work in advertising our programs that we have, and we'll be sharing some of that with you. Other key accomplishments are our crime, Citizen Crime Prevention video, which we will be sharing with you momentarily. Actually, I'm going to go ahead and play a quick, this is going to work. Apologies. There we go. There we go. Good. She's sitting there. A moment. Should just play. Hopefully, we will. Oh. Okay, keep going. It's later. Got it. There she goes. All right, other activities that we have are the Police Recognition Day at Tanfran, where we've actually helped with setting up and the take-down of the different participants' booths. We've actually had quite a few participation from local city representatives from Colma, Burlingame, San Mateo, and so they were actually helping with part of that process. And as a committee, we actually share a lot of our crime prevention literature. There's actually some of the slides that we have with our police chief at Barbary and our mayor, as well as some of our members. Hopefully, this is going to be our crime prevention. Here we go.
So good to see you. I'm glad you're able to come over.
I heard you got a bike for Christmas.
I did.
That's awesome.
What did you get?
I got a nice hat and a beautiful skirt.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Do you know that guy?
No, he looks suspicious.
Aren't they out of town?
They are. We should call the police.
Hello. There's someone. We're Neighborhood Watch, and that's what we do.
We were able to feature this video on San Bruno Cable, as well as on YouTube, so we have actually gotten quite a few views, and it's a great way for us to kind of get more information about our committee out to local residents and hopefully gain greater participation. Other things that we've done is Community Day in the Park. It's actually a really great time for us to really connect with our residents. We found that to be a little bit more helpful than when we're actually at Tanfran, because we get a lot of people from different cities, and we definitely want to encourage our residents of San Bruno to get engaged with the community. The other things that we do are National Night Out, which has been a big event. It's the first Tuesday of every August, and this is where we have an opportunity to encourage our residents to, and our Neighborhood Watch block captains, to host parties where they can actually engage with the community. It also provides residents with an opportunity to meet and greet with our mayor or city council members, as well as our police and San Bruno Fire Department. So, these are some of the events that we had actually here at Grundy Park, and so we do that actually every year. I'm going to turn it over now to my colleague, Peter Carey.
We also had our booth at Assemblyman Mullins Health Fair at Tanfran Mall, his health and safety fair of the year. Some of the other activities and accomplishments of the Crime Prevention Committee have been to distribute safe and crime prevention information, brochures at City Hall, the library, senior center, rec center, safety and crime prevention literature on Neighborhood Watch, DNA collection kit, making directions to fill it out, reported suspicious activity brochures, and child safety information.
The video's up right now.
And...
National Night Out is a grassroots community event, which started in 1984 in about 400 communities in 23 states. National Night Out enhances the relationship between neighbors and law enforcement while bringing back a true sense of community.
Among the most important aspects of National Night Out is the fact that it's an event that's generated and initiated by our community. Police Department is excited and eager to go out into the community, into our neighborhoods, to speak with residents, interact with residents, have a snack or a soda with residents in an informal, relaxed atmosphere, where we can exchange information, hear the concerns of people in the community, and learn how we can do our job better and be more effective in promoting a safer and stronger San Bruno.
Okay, as I said, we distributed crime prevention information, Neighborhood Watch, different brochures throughout. We've also, the committee has shared informational slides at the safety fairs and other citizen crime prevention presentations highlighting the committee and the Police Department collaboration. Maintain communication with Neighborhood Watch groups. Distributed crime prevention tips for public information, and posted on the San Bruno Cable Television informational channel. We've also updated posting of meeting agendas and minutes of the San Bruno Police Department Crime Prevention Committee webpage. Prepared a National Night Out flyer to be distributed by block captains and also distributed to the general public. Planned and participated in multiple locations, August 7th, 2018, for the National Night Among the most important aspects of National Night Out is the fact that it's an event that's generated and initiated by our community. Police Department is excited and eager to go out into the community, into our neighborhoods, to speak with residents, interact with residents, have a snack or a soda with residents in an informal, relaxed atmosphere, where we can exchange information, hear the concerns of people in the community, and learn how we can do our job better and be more effective in promoting a safer and stronger San Bruno.
Okay, as I said, we distributed crime prevention information, Neighborhood Watch, different brochures throughout. We've also, the committee has shared informational slides at the safety fairs, and other Citizen Crime Prevention presentations highlighting the committee and the police department collaboration. Maintained communication with Neighborhood Watch groups, distributed crime prevention tips for public information, and posted on the San Bruno Cable television informational channel. We've also updated posting of meeting agendas and minutes of the San Bruno Police Department Crime Prevention Committee webpage. Prepared a National Night Out flyer to be distributed by block captains and also distributed to the general public. Planned and participated in multiple locations, August 7th, 2018, for the National Night Out in San Bruno. We've obtained pencils, stickers, other gear to give out at our safety coloring books, obtained from a state legislator at our informational table. We've also obtained child DNA kits for distribution at our information table during events. Our goals for the upcoming year is more of the Neighborhood Watch outreach, outreach to local merchants on San Mateo Avenue to possibly host an event, work with the local schools to get them involved. On National Night Out, we're trying to get the word out more, working with the schools, hopefully with Bel Air and others for the National Night Out event. Neighborhood Watch incentives to reach out to local insurance agencies to see if you might meet some discounts in your policies. We have, the city, the police department has a security camera sign-up, where you can register your security cameras to inform the PD as far as who has them, so assist them in solving some prime problems. We're going to see about creating a flyer for residents and business, and each month we have crime tips that are work, that are on San Bruno Cable, posted every month. I would like to thank council, staff, liaison, Marty, certainly the San Bruno Police Department, the chief, Officer Sherry Campbell, and Officer Howard Hoyer, who's been our liaison. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. Questions from council? Please, Marty.
Yes, Lion, Peter, I would like to thank you and the committee for the work you have done in the last year and continuing forward, and it was absolute pleasure to work with all of you, so thank you very much on that.
Great.
Anything else, council? Robert, Peter, where did Deanna go? Just wanted to thank all of you, and please take back to the committee our appreciation and thanks for the work that you do and the volunteer that you give to the community, and I'm sure we'll see you at National Night Out.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Really quick, I just wanted to highlight that if anybody's interested, we meet second Thursday of every month at 7:00 PM at City Hall, Conference Room 113. Thank you.
And the question just came up, do we know when National Night Out is?
August 6th.
So, August 6th.
August 6th.
Thank you. Thank you.